Ready.
Five thirty, we're good.
Okay, so it is according to this device I have here, five thirties. So, welcome to our BOS the thirtieth twenty twenty-three meeting. This meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Healy's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. I will confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. I am Bob Spring, BOS Chair. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. John Jeffries.
Is here.
Robin Hunter.
Present.
When I staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Chris Costello.
Here.
Mike Blanchard.
Mike's here.
Okay. And anticipated speakers on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. So I'm assuming we're, Denise leave?
No, she's back.
All right, so we are honored to have Denise, our rep at the state level, come to present a budget briefing for us. So before I do that, I will ask for citizen comments. And if, do we have, moan any citizen comments?
Not that I see here, but I'm not sure if anybody's on the phone or.
All right, well, we'll get on to our state rep. Denise, you have the gavel.
Thank you very much. Thank you, and I'm so glad to see everyone. And I know that Chris is going to help me with the slides. But first, I wanted to thank you just for the opportunity to come and speak. We are midway through this fiscal year. I agree with Robin, who was talking about, it's hard to believe that we're actually at this point, that tomorrow's December first. But I wanted to check in with all of you. I bring you some news, and I know it's time for us to begin to plan. So on that first slide, I was just highlighting, not certainly all the parts of the budget that I have worked on, but the ones that I believe are on that next slide, Chris, that I think have a major impact on the residents of Dover. When we've done citizen surveys, when I look at emails, when I take calls, these issues are very important. And in the FY twenty-four budget, which runs till June thirtieth of next year, was certainly the money that we put in the budget for clean energy. Very important to many of the residents in Dover and many of the very young residents in Dover that I'm very pleased to work with, the high school students that I speak to. The money for mental health, this has been a consistent high priority and value for the residents of Dover, and we continue to put significant resources into mental health at the state level. In fact, to the tune of one point one three billion dollars for children's mental health. We continue to work on adults' support services. And when you see it says loan forgiveness for providers, one of the things that we have found, and this is a recurrent theme in the presentation, coming through COVID, is the tremendous impact on the workforce and a tremendous impact on the health and human services workforce. And we believe that in order to get more people involved in mental health, to look at social workers, to look at other people around behavioral health issues, that to bring them into the workforce, the cost for their education can be a barrier. And if they complete their education and they're working in the Commonwealth, we're engaging in a program with loan forgiveness for them. Public education, which is, I represent all of Needham, all of Dover, and half of Medfield, is one of the highest values of our communities. It's certainly the six point five nine billion dollars for chapter seventy. This is the strongest education budget we have ever issued in the Commonwealth. And we are in year three of a six-year Student Opportunity Act, which doesn't impact the communities that I represent, but certainly impacts the communities of such great needs, so deserving, and for whom many of the residents of Dover have supported. Looking at these communities and making sure we're closing the gap in education in Massachusetts. Early education and childcare emerged as one of our major issues during COVID that not only has a value for the development of small children and their safety and welfare, but also for the tremendous impact we understood it had on the economy. People could not return to work, who could not have quality or any early education in childcare. And I want to discuss that a little bit more with you. And then public health, which has been a growing concern, certainly in Dover, as we came through COVID and some of the other issues that we're looking at. And as nine, nine hundred sixty-five point four million for programs also concerned early intervention, very important in our communities. Bob and I have had long conversations about special education, but we know many families with children with great needs move into a community like Dover or like Needham, and those early intervention services make a major difference in the child's overall progress, which we're all working for. And regional public health, which I'm very much an advocate for Dover as we look at what other towns can offer, what services we can share. So that money, the next page, Chris, just continues the preventative services that we continue to fund, anyone who's listening to the radio today and talking about the decreasing age of mortality in the United States. We can look at really big issues like homicide deaths, we can look at suicide incidences. But what we're seeing is an overall decrease in kind of our preventative services and our lifestyle issues. So we're putting money into those issues as well. Operation House Call for our families with individuals with disabilities. This is a way to train people who are healthcare professionals, who do not have anything in their curriculum around how to deal with people with disabilities, people with communication issues, people with behavior issues. And this program will be helpful when Beth Israel Deaconess is down the street from us. That near emergency room is always now very full. And you know that in the town of Needham, there are more than thirteen group homes. Certainly in the town of Medfield, we see that many families in Dover with individuals with disabilities need to know that their family members, their loved ones, will be treated with respect and with a therapeutic intervention for what they need. The state has funded universal school meals. During COVID, the federal government picked up the tab and was funding breakfast and lunch for all students across the country. When the COVID emergency was lifted, the federal government took back their commitment to that money, but Massachusetts stepped forward because we had learned during that time the difference that it makes for students to have a breakfast, to have a lunch, to not have the stigma of needing support. I'm doing a lot of work on early intervention, little ones that are all eating the same food or eating better, experiencing and experimenting with more and different foods. And there is an overall sense that students who are hungry cannot learn, and students who are getting their meals are better participants in their class. We're seeing that very clearly, though anecdotally at this time. There was language around eviction protections and around no-cost calls for people that are incarcerated. In the next slide, Chris, which is the FY twenty-four budget, really focused on Dover local aid in the chapter seventy. Although the local aid is not much money for Dover, I always like to say it's more money than it was the year before. And you can see that. And the chapter seventy money includes Dover and the Dover Sherwood money because of our high school. You know, that's a formula, and that's something that is impacted by extraneous issues. It's a formula that applies to all towns and cities in the Commonwealth, except for those Student Opportunity Act communities now, which are twenty communities in the Commonwealth. And the money for the Special Education Circuit Breaker is a formula as well. The issue with the Special Education Circuit Breaker that makes it very, very difficult for towns, and you can see for Dover, it's over a million dollars, is that is money that's reimbursed to the town. So the town takes on that first initial cost, and that can be real concern as those needs are first identified and to make sure those services are in place. Once those services have been delivered, there is a reimbursement in the following years. What I have talked to, and I've talked to about this for years, I haven't made this happen yet. It is my belief that for, there are some students in the Commonwealth very low incidence, these are not big numbers, but a very high cost, a child that needs tremendous services and support. I believe that those costs, which can be three hundred thousand dollars, can be more than that, that maybe in a town that hadn't anticipated those costs at all, that I believe the state should pick up that tab just right away. The other issues, we can anticipate, we can plan for, we can say it's expected. But I continue to work on that issue around the special ed circuit breaker. I am working on it harder than ever because on the next slide, I will share with you that I am the Chair of the Joint Committee on Education now. This committee is just fascinating beyond words and very intense. You know, my alarm goes off at five thirty in the morning, and WBC is talking to me about education issues that are coming up, and I'm like, oh. And that seems to be every day. We've got three hundred and thirty-four bills before the committee. We've had fourteen hearings that last five to six hours, some, not all. And I just listed for you the kind of topics that I'm working on. I'm thinking people that are watching this meeting. For them, it might be an issue of particular interest, and of course, they should reach out to me. And I wanted you to see this in case there's any further questions. I'm also the elected chair of a permanent commission on the status of individuals with disabilities. This commission is permanent, which most commissions are not. And it's funded, which very few commissions are. And we have worked on the issue around the workforce for people with disabilities in this past year. There's twenty-one commissioners statewide appointed by the different elected by the governor, by the treasurer, by the secretary, by the attorney general. And these commissioners have worked in subcommittees and were working on the issue of the workforce. Number one, the workforce who serves individuals with disabilities. These are the people that work in group homes, the people that work as job coaches, the people that work in individual support. That workforce has been decimated through COVID. People left that workforce during COVID, and they are not coming back. It's a very low-paying job with high responsibility. And when the Amazon warehouse opens up next door and giving you way more money, you can do shift work and you don't have somebody's life in your hands, that seems to be the choice people are making. The other side of that workforce is people with disabilities who want to be in the workforce. Not everyone with a disability can be in the workforce or chooses to be in the workforce. But if we took that subpopulation, call them a hundred percent, hundred percent of the people who can be there and want to be there, only thirty-eight percent of those people are working. And there's many barriers to that kind of employment at a time when we are desperate, we are desperate to bring people into the workforce. So the commission has worked hard on those two issues in this past year. The next slide, Chris, is actually the education budget initiatives. And I just wanted to share that as well with you. And you'll see the special ed circuit breaker, although I just talked about Dover's money, is over five hundred and four million dollars. And I want to talk to you about the early education and care. That number in your lower left corner is one point five billion dollars. When we were in the middle of COVID, the federal government poured money into the Commonwealth and every other state in the nation to try and support early education and childcare with the belief that the workforce would rapidly return, and that one of the greatest needs would be early education and care for the workforce to come back, right? The two things happened. Number one, when the COVID emergency was lifted, the federal government took back all that money. Number two, it's been very hard to predict what is actually happening with the workforce in general. But what we did know is Massachusetts recognized, like the federal government did, that to have a strong, robust workforce, we need to be able to have early education and childcare available. And so the Commonwealth picked up that tab, supporting the early education and childcare entities, stabilizing them. Because as they were trying to come out of COVID, they had a dearth of early educators, they had costs that they were trying to address, and they needed to be stabilized, and that's what that money originally was. Right now, we are trying very much to assess in the Commonwealth. That was the one year stabilized the workforce. We weren't gonna, other states just fell off the cliff, Massachusetts didn't. We wanted to stabilize the workforce. Now we are looking to the way the workforce to stabilize early education care. Now we're looking for the ways that we can sustain it and what that actually looks like for us. As the Chair of Education, this is a responsibility I have. And I am looking very much at the issue around access, which is not only do we have the capacity for the many children that need early education and care, we have a waiting list right now of more than twenty-one thousand children in the Commonwealth that get subsidies. That's not even the total universe of children in the Commonwealth that need early education and care. But access also includes the workforce. We have classrooms with empty seats because there are no early educators. We're looking at affordability. On average now, if you're paying the full tuition for early education and childcare, it is anywhere between twenty-one thousand and thirty thousand dollars per child per year. And often, young families will have a couple of children that are in that age group needing early education and childcare. And we're looking very much at quality of care. If we're going to use taxpayer money for early education and care, we want to ensure the taxpayer that these are quality programs that are going to make a difference for children, for families, and for the future of the Commonwealth. So that's a big undertaking that is happening presently. The next slide is around security money for Dover. So in this year, and this money is guaranteed, is the seventy-five thousand dollars for the fire department's safety gear. And we've got great people on our warrant committee to thank for working in partnership and being able to identify this need, and I'm very pleased to have worked on this for Dover. The next slide is good news that I bring to you tonight that has just broken in the last couple of hours, where in the previous budget, we had worked together to have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for municipal cybersecurity upgrades. This is very important to the Board of Selectmen. I believe, Bob, I remember this was important to you and Chief McGowan when he was here. The town, through a variety of reasons, wasn't able to exercise that money. In this supplemental budget, we have made sure that we have, it's called a reversion, that we have reverted the language, and Dover still has this money till the end of FY twenty-four. So I'm hoping that Mike says, yes, I'll get right on this.
I'm sure he will.
I think it's.
I'm very pleased to bring this news. And the next page is just on session priorities and what's coming up. And I want you to know on the issue of public health, I am the chief sponsor of the State Action Plan for Public Health Excellence. The House has passed this bill, the Senate passed this bill unanimously. Governor Baker vetoed it at that time for issues that are not quite clear to me, but certainly a concern around cost. We have addressed those issues, we've refiled the bill. I'm very hopeful we're going to see this again. This is work that is the culmination of identifying need in twenty fourteen. I wrote the legislation for the commission, the commission got seated. We did the first public health action plan that was signed just prior to the declaration of the COVID emergency. So it wasn't because of the COVID emergency, but it was timely because of it. And what we learned during the pandemic time was that the bill was on the right track, but wasn't strong enough about compelling actions around the quality of the standards related to public health, how we could educate people, how we could train people, what resources would be available from the Department of Public Health, and most importantly, making it more fluid for towns to work together, to play to their strengths and to fill in their own gaps by working with other towns. So I'm very much looking forward to what I believe will be the successful passage of this bill again. A bill on water quality that came directly through my work with Dover, just saying that in small communities, we need a DEP to do a better job at gathering data so that small communities could better address water quality issues as they were emerging instead of dealing with what could be an emergency. I am the chief sponsor of the hybrid public meeting law, which I'm very glad that we're all meeting this way, and I can tell you that it has increased citizen participation across the Commonwealth. And it is my firm belief that if we can all get our information in real time, it will decrease the toxicity of social media that's infused with skepticism and misinformation. And we can listen to what our municipal leaders are saying as they're saying it, and we can make up our own minds about what we think of that. But I think access to public meetings is a huge gain for citizens in the Commonwealth. I work on the issue of healthcare worker safety around workplace violence. Secret, maybe not such a secret, but there is a great deal of violence in healthcare facilities, and there always has been. You know, they're volatile environments with people oftentimes experiencing some of the worst moments of their life, coming into it at least prepared. That has been true, but we have seen a tremendous escalation because of the substance use disorder issues, because of the COVID issues, because of the toxic information that's out there and misinformation that's out there. And this bill I have worked long and hard on just to ensure that healthcare facilities have workplace violence plans, and the employees actually know about them, and we can make sure and hold accountable facilities that they are implementing their plan. And the early education and childcare bill that I talked to you about. I have voted affirmatively on the tax relief bill that came forward and the final piece around the human services workforce. I just want to alert everyone to how deeply concerned I am about human services. So that is the agencies of the Department of Public Health, the Department of Children and Families, which is DCF, DDS, which is Developmental Services, DMH, which is Mental Health Services. We have not, at the state level, built back that workforce. And I believe that individuals and families really are feeling that gap and are in need of more services. I believe many, many individuals are underserved presently, and I do believe that's a major priority for the Commonwealth. And then, Chris, my last page is my commercial for the Gallup Press. And I just wanted to share with anyone who wants to sign up for it. I have been very touched, and certainly at Dover days was very touched at the number of people. Frequently, I will have a statement about something that I'm working on or have dedicated time to. But I always have the news that is happening and events that are happening in Needham, Dover, and Medfield. And I have found that people just kind of love that. They want to know what's happening in their town, they like to see what's happening in other towns. And I'm hoping it's something that makes us feel connected and belonging to each other. And with that, I will take any question you might have on your mind.
So Denise, the one thing I'm wondering about is when do you sleep? You certainly have a full plate. And we in Dover really appreciate everything you do for us and the support you give to the town.
Thank you. I'll share a little personal note. So I'm of Greek descent. And in the Greek culture, the grandmother is called the yaya. I now have four grandchildren between the ages of five and two. So I'm like the instant yaya, right? And I don't want to sleep because I want to make sure I have time with those little ones.
Well, Denise, I want to second Robin's motion. Thank you very, very much. I mean, I don't know if everybody knows how much work you do on Dover's behalf. I have a pretty good feeling that many, many people do, and it is greatly appreciated. And certainly, we've agreed on things, and we've gone head to head on things. And I hope that continues as we go forward, but my head's starting to get, you know, a little sore. So we can take it easy on me. Are there any other questions from the residents?
Denise, thank you just to join in.
John doesn't care, we don't have to listen to him.
For the record, Denise is my favorite Democrat.
And only one, Denise, and only one.
And only one. Thank you, Denise, for everything. It's an extensive record, it's an extensive list. Denise, just one, one quick thing, and I know we're up against the clock, we've only got two minutes. So the, the projection for the circuit breaker is down about ten percent. Is that because we had students age out? Or is that, is that just, is that just a, a numbers of, number of student issue this year?
It's so, I don't know what it's connected to per student, but it's a formula based on student needs. So either we had someone leave the system, or the needs have decreased in some way, but it's directly tied to the needs of the students that we have in the town at that moment in time that it's calculated.
Yeah, typically.
It's hard to know, John.
Yeah, typically, when you see the decrease, it's because students have aged out and.
High, high cost students.
High cost students, students that were out of district and where we have a concerted effort to bring students back into the district. And, and that effort has led, my wife, as you know, Denise is, is the BCBA for Pine Hill and has a kindergarten class, so she's dealing with this every minute of every day. And we're, we're trying to educate more kids in district, and thus, the circuit breaker is always a big part of it, of what we're hoping to get.
And John, your wife can speak to this so well, I'm sure, is the social emotional needs of our children. And they're just finding the number of children, and particularly these very young children that are coming into the school system, that the word they're using is dysregulated, just not necessarily prepared, right, in a way that maybe their peers were before COVID. And we're trying to very much to understand that and make sure that there's services in place to support them.
All right then. Well, again, we all thank you so much for all that you do for us. Don't hesitate to ask John for any money you may need for upcoming campaigns, and I'll actually have to contribute as well. Good luck tonight.
Now we're all in trouble, Bob. Now we're all in trouble.
Good luck.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
So we're going to go to item one dot two.
So Bob, the public hearing was actually advertised for six thirty before we changed the meeting time to five thirty, so I'd ask we hold off on that and skip to, to I one point three.
You want to go to three?
Yeah, and we can circle back to two once it hits, anytime after six thirty.
Okay.
We'll keep you honest, Bob.
Excuse me?
We'll keep you honest at six thirty.
Said five something on that. Two, 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 let me see if I can find it.
So one, three is the community center building project?
Yep. Yep, but it's down a lot of pages.
I know it is.
Okay.
Denise's presentation.
Community Center Building Project, there's two items, one is the asbestos abatement. And one is the director's office, presenter is Ford's falling. And Al Estaviz, our O P M.
Hi Bob, uh, thank you. Uh, I'm actually trying to share my screen and I'm disabled. Is there any way I can get access to that?
Oh, you have to be nice to Chris.
Give it a try now.
All right, let's try this. Here we go. That worked.
You worked.
Okay, uh, thank you and hello everyone. Al Estaviz, I'm the owner's project manager. I worked for Colliers for the Dover Community Center project. So the format for my presentation today is, uh, I'm going to go through the, uh, and I thought there were three different agenda items. One of them was going to be the progress to date on the project. Um, and so my, the format for today is going to, I'm going to go over all three items and then open it up for questions.
That's the time. Can we just do the two, please?
Yeah, of course. Uh, so going straight into the asbestos change order. Uh, so essentially, uh, during the course of asbestos abatement on the project, uh, the hygienist on the project is the third party monitoring company. They're in charge of ensuring that the uh, asbestos abatement work is done per regulation. Uh, they identified a number of additional suspect materials that were sampled, tested, and some of which came back positive for asbestos. Um, some of these asbestos, including, uh, you know, the boilers, uh, cork boards adhesive, uh, adhesive behind the cork boards, um, concealed windows that were behind walls and within over there, caulking materials, uh, et cetera. Uh, additionally, there were some discrepancies with the estimated quantities in the assessment report that was done during the due diligence process. And so what we, uh, were looking at is an, uh, total estimated cost of uh, two hundred, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And here is a breakdown of what those, uh, that additional asbestos is. And what we're, uh, again, so, so the total estimated cost was two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We were actually, uh, we're now anticipating that cost to be closer to two hundred thousand, so about twenty thousand dollars less than initially anticipated. Uh, which was actually, uh, this two hundred and twenty thousand dollar estimate was actually uh, reduced from the initial estimate, which is closer to two hundred and forty thousand dollars. We had the general contractor go back and reach out to other subcontractors and negotiate that price. Uh, we were also a little bit under the, uh, initial estimated, uh, duration of that work. And what it means, uh, in terms of contingency, uh, it's the two hundred thousand dollars is about eight percent of the con- the contingency in the project. Um, and so, uh, the remaining contingency is two point two five million dollars. Next on the agenda item is the director's office. Uh, so we, uh, received.
Al, can, is it okay to ask you questions now or do you want to finish?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we, we, I think we could do that.
So in, in, in your experience is, is, um, such a discrepancy in an estimate for asbestos removal, given the age of the building? Something that's, that's common? I mean, I know from the preliminary conversations that, that we had, that, you know, there was an expectation that there would be asbestos in the windows and the boilers, but it seems like there was a lot more than what was expected. So is this a common occurrence in these building projects? You know, is, is it just something that's very difficult to get a handle on or or should we have done a better job estimating the amount of asbestos?
It is, uh, it is common to find additional asbestos during the, you know, construction process. Uh, in this case particularly, because when that assessment was done was meant to be, you know, that was during the due diligence period. Uh, the building was occupied and there was no intrusive testing that could have, could have been done. Uh, that's something that was disclosed in the report. Um, and so it, it was, it was really at, at the best estimate to what we could anticipate of find, you know, um, of abating in the building as far as scope quantities and, uh, you know, what cost.
Okay. So as usual, the devil's in the details, right?
Correct. Yeah.
And, um, if I may, Al, with regards to the invasive testing, so if you couldn't do it, how did you, what, what formula did you use to come up with the amount that we're over by? And what percentage are we over the amount that was set aside for the asbestos abate, abatement currently?
Sure. So the, uh, the base scope that, uh, was based on that es- initial estimate of asbestos uh, was around a hundred and eighty-five thousand. And, you know, we, we, we found about, you know, two hundred thousand dollars of additional asbestos in the building.
Wow, so we weren't even close. We missed it by a hundred percent.
Yes, a, a big part of that was, you know, one of the big ones that we can see here on the screen is the boilers. You know, uh, my understanding is that so, there was some abatement that was done on those boilers. Uh, however, I think it's important to know that the intent of for that abatement was to continue using the boilers at the time. Uh, whereas the, um, during the abatement, the intent was to demolish those boilers. And there was asbestos that was found inside the access panels that could not have, were not accessed at the time of the initial assessment. And that, that was a big, you know, a, a pretty, uh, uh, big operation. Um, with the boilers that, you know, they're, uh, they had to be disassembled and, you know, that was made up of like thirty-two different uh, pieces, each one weighing like three to four hundred pounds. So it was a significant effort just to abate those boilers.
Yeah, I, I get all that. I, I've been in there. We've seen, we've all seen the boilers. We all, you, they're, they're literally big enough to stand in in some, some cases. So we, we know the scope and the magnitude of it, that, that's pretty clear. Um, we, as, you know, they're, they're ninety years old, so they're, they're very well known to the town, uh, to everybody who's ever, ever worked on it. But to miss, I, I, I just go back to missing it by a hundred percent. That's missing it by a mile. That is just to me, at that, if this is your business and this is what people who deal with the, let's just use the case, the boilers. You've got ninety-year-old boilers that are original that are, that, that you have to be dealing with. I don't know, on a regular basis, I don't know what the right term to describe it would be, but you've, you've had to seen it before. This is not something that's new. And I would say to miss it by twenty percent, sure, okay, I, I maybe could understand that. But by over a hundred percent, that just is, to me, a big, big miss. Bob?
No, I, that's what caught my eye was, y- you know, we were well warned. Right, as you say, John, everybody I talked to about this building, going back to twenty eighteen, warned us about asbestos. Uh, that there was a ton of asbestos, there's a ton of asbestos, there's a ton of asbestos. And so it was a high, so if somebody flagged something for you, at least when I was back in the business world, you would take a real hard look at it. And I don't understand how you miss by a hundred percent if you're taking a real look at it.
Well, I think it's because they, they were not able to do invasive testing. And so the estimate was based upon a visual inspection and.
But they take the professional responsibility, that's their professional responsibility.
Right, but. So I mean, we, I guess we knew it was a risk.
We did know it was a risk. But I, but we keep, but it's, you know, it's a risk that seems, every risk seems to wind up at our doorstep in a, in the, in a, in an increased charge. And I don't know what that, I don't know what the contract says with this inspector. I don't know the quality of their work. I don't know how they miss a hundred percent. All I get is a bill through Ford and the building committee. And, and, um, uh, it just seems to me that the standard for holding people accountable is weak at best.
Yeah, they, you know, the, the, the complexities and, you know, we had three different buildings, all of which were built before, you know, the asbestos was, you know, banned. Uh, certainly didn't help, um, you know, three buildings built in different dates and, and there was, uh, yeah, a number of, of concealed conditions that we just couldn't get access to. Um, and, uh, yeah, I think, I, I think, you know, the, there probably could have been areas of the, uh, the prior assessment report that they could have like warned us, for example, on the boilers, you know, put a note in there. You know, eh, we, we, we did not find any asbestos, however, you know, um, uh, there's the potential for asbestos inside the, the boilers. And so just, you know, keep that in mind when you're thinking about, uh, you know, uh, the demolition of, of the building.
Again, I, I, I just, just to go back on that to just exactly what you said, the boilers are known. You know when they're built, you knew where they were manufactured, you, you, we, we never changed them. So if they're, if the boilers are, um, the, the, it's a very good picture of them, you know, eh, and if you, you see the boilers, you, you'd know the vintage. I, I just would, it, it's like anything else, when you go for a part, you look up the, the, the number of the part, you get the, you, you get a part whether it's a replacement part, and the manufacturer of that replacement part knows. They literally know what is, how it's built and how it's construction, constructed. And it also, they've got to know how the building in the, or this particular case, let's just again, stick with the boilers. They were, they were serviced. They've never changed. They're ninety years old. So I, I, I can't, I just can't see how this falls back on us when you have a product like a boiler that doesn't change. There's no tricks to it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, and I understand, you know, why, why is it that we found two hundred thousand dollars worth of additional asbestos when we paid for an assessment, you know, before? And, you know, yeah, part of that is concealed conditions, uh, you know, there were some of the quantities where there were some discrepancies with the quantities for sure. You know, um, but, yeah.
So think about this. They missed it by a hundred percent. What else are they going to miss by a hundred percent? We, we're, we're in the project for, uh, six months. We're six months into it. This is a hundred percent miss. And the, the cost to us is two hundred thousand. So as you point out, it's eight percent of the contingency, not a big deal. But relatively speaking, it's a huge deal. It's a, it's a big percent of what the estimated cost would be. What's next? And then what happens when all of the contingency is exhausted? Where do we go from here?
Yeah, and the good thing is that the, the, the biggest risk, the contingencies in the beginning of the project, because that's when we're, you know, um, exposing conditions that could not be visible. And so we're done through that, you know, we're done with that process. You know, like we didn't know what we were gonna, you know, uh, co- come into, um, you know, starting the project. And so that, that was, that was the, hence down the biggest risk, you know, and excavating, we, you know, we, we had a geotech report and you know, the good thing is on, on that end, you know, the, the soil, the soils were good and were as anticipated. There were no, you know, hidden, you know, tanks or anything under the ground. So the biggest risk of the continuous is certainly at the very beginning, especially on a, on a renovation project. Um, but we're, we're now past that. And so we're, you know, uh, the, the buildings that were turned down already and we're very much into the, you know, putting up the new buildings and, um, gonna start with the, the interior work.
So Al, one of, one of the largest items on that list is approximately, it's seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars for general conditions. It says twenty-one days, so that's thirty-five hundred dollars a day. What, what is that? I mean, this is, this is about forty-five percent of that total overage.
Yeah, so that's a good question. Um, so, uh, none of these asbestos was part of the, the base scope with the contractor. And in order for them to complete this work took seventeen calendar days, um, during which the contractor still had to pay for, you know, project manager, assistant project manager, a site superintendent, other, you know, field staff, uh, pay for the rental of the office trailer, you know, fencing utilities. And so that, that's what that cost is.
Well, that's general contractor overhead costs?
Uh, yeah, you, you call it, you know, overhead costs to pay for, you know, the, um, the staff as well as the, uh, tempor- you know, temporary utilities, trailer, et cetera.
I, I, I'm, I apologize.
One more time, please.
Robin?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, is this, is this for additional time for the general contractor or is this not for the general contractor?
This is for the general contractor.
But isn't, aren't we paying the general contractor to, to be there regardless? So why would we be paying for twenty-one more days at thirty-five dollars a day?
Right, yeah, um, it's because this was not part of their contract, that this was not included in their bid, um, you know, and so, uh, this is not something that they had accounted for in their bid. And this is additional work that took additional time and, and additional time that the contractor had to pay, you know, the, uh, staff.
But, but I thought experts were removing the, the asbestos, not the general contractor.
True, so the, the abatement subcontractor is the one that was doing this work, uh, but the, you know, um, eh, the, the contractor still, still needs, you know, the, the, the product manager being involved during this process, the, the site super supervisor, the assistant project manager, uh, to help even just price all this stuff. And, and so this, this additional time that, that, that it takes us staff, but you know, it's still on site.
But with, Robin, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, I just, I, I, again, with all due respect, that doesn't make any sense. You just described the general conditions and the days, and, and you mentioned the rental of the trailer, the, the fences, the, all the general conditions that are at the site. Those wouldn't change. The site is the site. None of that is going to change if the specialists are going in and removing the asbestos. Everything remains the same. How can there be seventy-three thousand dollars of additional costs on things that have to be there?
Right, I mean, that's, that's, that's what I'm grappling with. You know, I, I would think it needs to be there in any event.
Yeah, because it, because it, it essentially extends their contract duration, and this is not something that they could have, you know, instead of doing this additional abatement, they could have, they, they could have started demolition of the buildings and finished the project when they were anticipating, but because that's not the case. Um, and this is, you know, uh, this is in the industry, industry standard when you're looking at change orders. Um, a lot of the times there's a time impact associated with it and, and general conditions associated with it. Uh, this is in their contract, and again, it's a industry standard in construction.
Sounds like an excuse. Anybody negotiating with this guy?
We, we have a contract, I guess, if you read through the contract.
Yeah, this is built into the contract. So basically they had to sit for, for twenty-one days and wait before they could continue the project. And so it's based into the contract that they get this, this general condition, uh, money based on, on the time.
So is that a cost that should be passed back to the inspectors who didn't do their job?
Uh, no, I, I.
In their report, they, they have a clause, I, I, you know, they, they put in there. We, we, because the site was occupied, we weren't able to do a complete investigation.
Who was occupying back in twenty and twenty-one?
I, I don't know. You know, I think, I think this change order is in front of us. The work was done, we have a contingency. You know, I think, I think we need, you know, there're gonna be many more of these. Hopefully not many more, but there are going to be other challenges along the way. And at the end of the project, you know, we need to look at all the pluses and minuses and figure out where we end up.
Well, it's kind of late in the day at the end of the project. Think you got to look at it as you go along the path.
Right, but we, we, we have a contract.
Understood.
This is, this is all allowable.
Graduated law school, I know contract.
Right, I, you know, it's, it is an outrageous amount, but.
Yeah, this is outrageous amount, and the contracts are skewed to the contractor. And, um, you know, that's why municipal, um, construction is so outrageous. We all know that. Uh, the question is, are we being aggressive enough at the point to protect our interests? And it doesn't sound like it to me. It sounds like everybody flops back on, oh, it's in the country. And it doesn't sound like it to me. It sounds like everybody flops back on, oh, it's in the contract to know this. Although we, Al was able to negotiate about a two hundred thousand dollar, what was it, Al? How much money did you save?
Uh, well, from the initial estimate, about forty thousand.
You know, so that, that's money in our pocket. So. I'm sorry, someone want to speak?
Yeah, one thing I wanted to point out is, you know, um, a, a lot of this, this, this stuff, I know, you know, um, if it had been identified, um, during the, you know, that initial assessment in the due diligence period, it's, it's something that the town would have still had had to pay for. Um, so it's not, not necessarily, you know, considered like, like, you know, considered damages per se. It, a lot of it, just, it, it would have been nice to know ahead of time so that we had the, you know, we understood what we're go- going into and we had the, the budget for it. Um, unfortunately, you know, there was a lot of unconcealed conditions there.
Right. John or Robin, any other comments?
No.
So this, we're not voting on this tonight, are we?
No, so, so to be clear, the, the intention, this has been kind of, the select board, the selectmen have been waiting for this. So we wanted to provide you with an update. I know we didn't have time for the entire update. We can certainly do that at some point. Uh, but as Al mentioned, they're still negotiating and, and working on that final cost. So um, we will bring it back at that point for a vote. Um, for the selectmen's benefit, hopefully that point, it's just a vote because you understand it, but we could certainly revisit any questions or details that you want when we come back with sort of actual vote with the final number.
Okay, then we're gonna move on. Al, thank you very much.
Of course. Okay, so, um, the next agenda item is the, uh, additional feasibility study for the director's office. Uh, so we received a request, uh, from the board of selectmen to add an, a private enclosed office for uh, a community center director. Um, now, it's important to know that, uh, we, we do have a, a place for this committee center director a position in the plans, uh, right now. However, it's, that's, that is a workstation and or cubicle that's, uh, in the open office area, uh, right next to the main building entrance. So the request was for a private enclosed office for that position. Um, FMA, who's the architect on the project, uh, they were tasked, uh, with, uh, evaluating to see what options we had uh, for, uh, the location of this private enclosed office. Is a, is a very tight building and a program, so it was, you know, um, uh, definitely challenging. They looked at a, at six, a total of six different, um, uh, options, uh, that met the requirements of the position. Uh, so one of them being they had access to the public, uh, had access to natural light, as well as, you know, uh, we're in the middle of construction after all, so, uh, that it minimized the, uh, schedule and cost impact to the project. Uh, but most importantly, the, the, the program impact, um, to the project.
And it separated park and rec and COA.
Correct. So the two options that, that they, uh, that best, you know, were best suitable, uh, uh, for, uh, the private office that met that criteria was the open office area. Um, this is where we have the workstation for the position right now. Um, as well as the COA storage area in the nineteen-ten building that is staying.
Uh, why are you eliminating that one room that I've mentioned last time we had the billing committee?
I'm sorry, which?
There was a room on the right of the aisleway. When you walk back to the COA offices, that is some sort of a lounge.
Yeah, I'm gonna get to that in a second. So I'm, I'm, I'm going through, you know, the, the history of where, where we, where we are now. Um, so again, so the, the architect identified a total, uh, uh, they evaluated a total of six options against the criteria for the position. They came up with two areas that they recommended. On October twenty-sixth, the building committee voted to recommend authorizing the architect to uh, further evaluate the two recommended options to understand the feasibility, to make sure that, hey, you know, we can make this work, we're code. Uh, you know, we can make it work with the, the MEP systems that are designed, et cetera. Uh, uh, that was a cost of eighty-eight hu- uh, eighty-eight hundred dollars. Um, subsequent to that, on November eighth, uh, they were formally authorized to proceed with that study. We're anticipating getting that, uh, study next week. Um, so my understand, my understanding that of, of this, you know, um, uh, this meeting now is to, um, vote on also studying the feasibility of a, um, private office in, within the lounge space. Um, and again, this is one of the areas that was, uh, originally evaluated by the architect, but was not recommended because of the uh, impact to the program.
What programs, Al?
Uh, yeah, so I'm gonna get to that in a second. Um, so, um, you know, again, and again, just to, you know, um, the, the program of the building was something that was, uh, you know, developed collaboratively, collaboratively. And it was, uh, a, approved by the billing committee, the user groups and the community. Um, and so the, that, uh, additional feasibility study, uh, is estimated to cost around nine thousand dollars for the architect to study that location. And, um, the program, um, and, uh, the program for that space is shown here on the column for the lounge space. Uh, my understanding is that, you know, this space was gonna be used, uh, through reservation, uh, ahead of time. Um, and it had a little bit of a different, you know, um, uh, feel that, you know, it was more of a, you know, uh, for different for, you know, furniture arrangement than, you know, your typical conference room. And it was also gonna be used, my understanding, for the shine council, uh, through, you know, through reservation as well.
This is all speculative. Right? The reason, Kathy, don't shake your head. The, um, when we're talking about what we thought about two years ago, we had no idea how this was gonna play out. So we are now at a point in time where we actually have the need that we didn't, that actually was identified close to two years ago, that we haven't acted on. Um, for a director of the community center. And we specified at that time, because I wrote the document with Chris Dwellie and with a group of people, um, outlining the position and why it was important. And, um, so right now, we're, we should move to the functional assessment and whether or not, uh, we should have a change order. That's what change orders are for. So I guess you're looking for, if you want us to vote eight thousand bucks to do the functional specs on this. Is that the, is that the motion, Mike?
Uh, so yes, it would be, it's actually, we're gonna go up, up to, or not to exceed nine thousand.
Can I have it?
Yeah, John, go ahead.
So, I, I don't understand this, this, uh, the, the cost part of it at all. We, we have spent eighty-eight hundred dollars for the current feasibility study that the architect has determined to focus on two, two options. We're asking for more options. Why do we have to spend another nine thousand but dollars for two more options? That just doesn't make any sense to me at all.
So, so I think the, the initial, uh, proposal for that eighty-eight hundred, um, was for the two options as they recommended. We're asking to go back and look at this additional space and the proposal they provided is nine thousand dollars for that, that look. And I think, as I understand it, there's a couple of reasons to that. One is, um, this is, is not office space where we're just kind of cutting it in half. It's a, it's a lounge space. So there's a little bit more to it. Um, you know, you're looking at, uh, electrical outlets that aren't necessarily there because it wasn't an office, HVAC, fire, uh, uh, sprinklers, those sort of things that all need to be looked at. Can they be moved? Um, and, you know, it, it does result in a higher cost for them to, to analyze it and, and it's more work for the spot.
Well, Mike, when I said at the last meeting, we have a, we have this huge community room fifty feet from this lounge area. Why the heck do we need a lounge area? I mean, I remember some of the, some of the things that people were coming up with back in twenty-eighteen, you know, to justify space. So if we have a lounge area, we simply make it a smaller lounge area because we have an incredible amount of lounge space in this new building. It's not a small building, right? This is not a small building. And we can easily should be able to cut carve out two hundred square feet or less for a proper office. Somebody's gonna run the facility.
So I think, I think.
Hang on, Mike. The storage area that you're talking about, is it the one at the northwest corner of the building?
Right, it's the one at the back there.
Right, so what you wanna do is you wanna have the director of the community center buried in the northwest corner of the building, where I was told at the last building community work, it was not suitable for an office. Because of all the, because of cost, all the work that would have to done, it was never laid out. So who, so what's going on?
Well, I mean, could you put the lounge in the general storage area? And then, you know, we could do some other kind of storage. We have whining road. I mean, it looks like.
So if, if you don't mind, uh, Bobby jumping in, so, uh, but, you know, back to your point. Why we need a lounge, uh, you know, is I think it's a different discussion. It, it was what was spacked and it wasn't the bid plans for this space to be this lounge area. Um, and I think to answer your question is, is yes, you know, it, it there has to be studied, but does it look like on paper we could, um, carve off an office space? I think the answer is yes. Uh, we need to do the study and the feasibility to make sure, but I think the architect could do that. Uh, and then that would just result in a smaller lounge space. So I think that is the purpose of the vote tonight is to, to proceed with that so the architect can do that work, to show that it's feasible. Here's where it would fit, here's how much is left, and then that ultimately would be a change order for the construction.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that. Robin mentioned whining road. You've mentioned the storage area. We have space. So we, I do not feel that we are bound and tied to what was decided by the building committee two years ago. We need to meet current and future needs, not past needs. And, and the world is changing.
Yeah, the, the one thing I would, I would say and jump in is, you know, the, 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 the programming phase and the schematic design phase of, uh, the project, it's one of the first, you know, efforts once the architect is brought on board, and that is perhaps the most collaborative effort in the design process. Um, and that was a, you know, months and months long process, uh, that included, you know, the, uh, bill, not just the billing committee, but the user groups and the community. Um, and so the, the, the programming and the, the schematic design, the plans that you see are based on um, on, on, on something that was, that was, you know, approved, um, you know, early on in the project before moving. Uh, because you, you know, after you, you approve that design and you start to make changes, it, it costs more money because you're now dealing with engineers. And right now, you're not just dealing with engineers, but you're also dealing with, you know, the project being in the middle of construction.
Right, so what you're saying, Al, we need to be careful with change orders, but none of us can predict the future. So again, what happened two years ago, based on a set of assumptions, talking to essentially stakeholders in the building primarily, um, you wind up with X. We may wind up with X squared, X cubed, or Y. As we actually try to anticipate and move to current needs and future needs. So that's just part of the game, as you guys, so, you know, it's part of the contract, um, that, that, uh, we need to be very careful about. And, um, you know, so yeah, I would, uh, like to see that cost out your eight thousand or nine thousand, whatever it is. Plus, I really wanted an assessment of space. We have storage space for this person. We have whining space for that person. How much friggin' space? Uh, did we used to have? Of course, we had about three thousand square feet for park and rec equipment up in the, upstairs in the library. It was sort of laying around. So space is going, if space becomes a concern, um, then I think there needs to be one heck of a lot of attention to how this building gets utilized. It's, 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 uh, the PR is flexible space. Didn't say flexible space at an outrageous cost. John?
I just go back to you've, you, we, we have, we've paid the architect eighty-eight hundred dollars for a current feasibility study. Why not just include the other two spaces in that study?
Because that feasibility, that, that eighty-eight hundred only cover the two spaces, uh, that.
Why? Why only two?
That was.
That's what the fee covers. The fee does not cover looking at additional spaces.
Why? Why only two?
We took the least cost option. We thought it would be relatively easy to stick, uh, someone in, which is really pretty small space. Um, but it did not meet all the criteria. You and I and Robin have spent lots of time talking about criteria, you know, professionally run. Lot, no, not, nobody reporting, professional people not reporting to volunteers. We wanted to separate COA and park and rec because it's too easy in the future to, to accuse them of bias if they choose things in their own interest. No bias. It needs, the community center director has to be a strictly neutral person. It was at least those three things um, that we have been talking about for a long time. This does not meet those criteria.
Well, I think the bottom line is, once again, and I say, the buck stops with us. We, we did not realize that there was no office for the, for the director of the community center.
Mainly because every time I asked, I told people, I was told it was being worked on. And it was told by me, by Carl Valente, it was told by me, by Mike Blanchard, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're working on it. I had, I wrote a note in March of twenty-three, I believe, pointing out that it had not been considered. So ignorance here is not correct.
Well, and just to be.
Well, just to be clear, Mike was not here.
All right.
These, these plans were designed and bid, you know, some time ago.
How long have you been here? Haven't, haven't you been here three or four years by now?
Well, you know, the issue is we are where we are. So if, if you, the initial proposal was only for two spaces, those spaces are not appropriate.
I get it. I get it. I, 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 I understand. Robin, um, and, and you're right. I, I get it. So, um, Bob, I, I would move to approve the expenditure of, of nine thousand dollars for the study of the, of the contingent of the other two plans.
I'll second that, John.
Can I, uh, jump in before, uh, I just, uh, I, I did wanna just kind of bring up what the total estimated cost for these additional offices? Um, just for information. Um, so we're looking at around eighty, eighty thousand dollars, so, you know, all in. Um, the one thing, just because there were a couple of comments that were related to, you know, can we look at additional spaces? Uh, one thing that's important to note is that not, that nine thousand dollar does not include reprogramming of any other spaces. It, what it is, it's the architect is gonna study a, a couple of different options within this lounge space to put a private office. Um, and then whatever remains for the lounge space remains, but it does not include, you know, makes, for example, making up for you know, the space that's taken up by the office elsewhere.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Can you also, I'm sorry, I'm trying to speak. Can you also talk about the timing of this?
Yeah, so that's, that's part of the reason for this slide. Um, so, uh, as, as you all know, we're, uh, in the middle of construction right now and we're anticipating beginning framing in the nineteen-ten building. That's where the lounge is, as well as the COA storage area, um, around the beginning of February. And, and so, you know, um, bit, you know, in, in order for us to, uh, get to a place where we can actually, you know, authorize the contractor through a change order to proceed with that work, there are a number of additional design exercises, pricing exercises, as well as approvals that are gonna be required to get to that place. Uh, and again, uh, framing of the nineteen-ten is anticipated to begin in February. So we would need, you know, we would need to, uh, you know, have a change order signed by the beginning of February i- in order to avoid, you know, additional, uh, uh, cost thinker and additional sched-, you know, sched-, potential schedule impacts to, uh, the project. There's other things that could also impact the cost. Uh, for example, we're very much, uh, into, uh, looking at the shop drawings for all the mechanical systems. Uh, once the, those systems are, you know, uh, approved and released, um, depending on where we are on the decision-making process, um, you know, uh, there could potentially be additional changes, uh, uh, charges there.
Now, Al, does that include the two-week delay, uh, because of asbestos? So is it February? But I know the project's a couple of weeks be running a little late because of.
Yes. Yes, it does.
So I guess you guys get to get to work.
Right, I think, so why don't you let us finish voting and then, then the architect needs to.
I was about to vote, but you guys cut me off. So when we left, we had a motion. We had a second. I was about to say I, I, uh, yes, Bob's.
And go for it.
Go for it.
Aye, John Jeffries.
Aye, Robin Hunter.
Thank you, guys.
And Bob, it's six thirty-eight, so we're ready.
Twelve-thirty, right? Am I late? All right, can we, we need our screen back, Al.
Yeah, there we go.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
Okay, see, oh, I'm late, eight minutes.
Right.
Um, okay, I think it goes to the operating budget. Mike, that's you.
No, 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 it goes. No, 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 it goes back to the.
Uh, I gotta go back to the.
The public hearing.
Yeah.
I told you, I remind you. I made myself a note.
Uh, public hearing, Ray Dover Wine Company, uh, for alteration on premises request. Now I'm gonna need help, Robin. My eyes are starting to go.
Uh, so I can I can jump in. So just want to be clear that you're opening a a public hearing um for for the request um. Uh, I don't know if it's the board's practice. I I usually make sure the public hearing notice is read. So Bob, if you'd like, I could read that.
Yes, please.
Sure. So pursuant to the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter one thirty eight, Section fifteen A. The Board of Selectmen for the Town of Dover will hold a public hearing on Thursday, November thirtieth. Twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M via Zoom on an application for alteration of licensed premises. For Swami Nisang Corporation, uh, doing business as Dover Wine Company at sixteen Springville Ave. With the plan on file in the Selectman's Office. Um, I believe we have uh Narav here, owner, but just to give a a little overview, um, as the board knows, because we we discussed um. Liquor license hours here previously, uh, the Dover Wine Company took over the Dover Market. Um, they do have a connection between the two. And Narav can correct me, but as I understand it, uh, what they would like to do is allow people to check out at the market. Um, so if they're doing some grocery shopping as well as liquor, they don't have to check out in two places. In order to do that, under the state guidelines, they need to have the liquor license expanded to include the market. And then also, as I understand it, there would be some um alcohol available behind the counter on the market side. Otherwise, all the alcohol would remain in the Dover Wine Company space. Narav, did I get that correct?
Yes.
Perfect. So if the board had any questions for Narav or myself, um, before you consider this, we'd be happy to answer them.
John?
Rav, do you uh, do you have to make any other changes to the the store with regards to, you know, for. Customers to move in and out around that load-bearing wall in the middle?
Uh. So you you you're talking the center where the booth store is. Yeah, so I mean, we we trying to make just one checkout. Uh, because you know, if it's the same corporation, I don't want you, if you're buying a bag of uh ice or something, I don't wanna do the separate transaction. So we just trying to make one side, but officially, according to the ABCC, I have to mention we trying to ring up at that side as well.
But John, to answer your question, I don't think, Narav, correct me, I don't think they intend any changes to that that doorway. It would it would remain.
Yeah, and we we, I'm not intense to bring any alcohol at the grocery side. Because I'm very clear, I'm keeping alcohol because the environment of the town and the store is very, you know, the family oriented. So I, we have lots of kids, customers. So just keeping alcohol at the separate side and the uh groceries and stuff at the other side. But just to follow the uh checkout transaction, I have to do this thing.
So I I uh, that that issue of the uh children, adolescents um and buying under the counter liquor. Um, that's what sort of struck me. How do we ensure that um. The odd sale of a bottle of, you know, whiskey from under the counter is captured so that um by camera. So that we can monitor it's that. Uh, the purchase of alcohol at that location. Of course, it is something teenagers would consider doing.
Yeah, but uh we uh, as ABCC laws requirement, all the stores, there is no se- sales checkout for the liquor. And we always ask for the IDs.
Yeah, ID can, yeah, I I've played the ID game. We've all played the ID game. If I were, if I were a parent, I wouldn't want this to happen.
I mean, uh, if if in tha- that case, it could be happening in any liquor store. But as a liquor store owner, we we go to us because we have an ID checking machine. Uh, which is certified by the police department. And if you bring any kind of the fake ID, we are very uh smart on I identify your fake ID as well. And we all, all the employees and by myself, we all deep certified. So I mean, I don't even need for the Massachusetts ID to uh identify the ID is fake or real.
Okay, thank you. Do, Mike, does the police department have a view of this?
Um, we did not, we did not review this with them. Um. You know, again, from our perspective, it was just checking out an additional register. Um.
Yeah, if you walked, if you walk uh Walpole Street on in April, when we tried to do a clean-up Dover days, you'd be amazed at the number of small uh whiskey bottles laying around. Um, so I'm I'm uh, I understand the business. Issue and the need to economize. Um, I'd like the I'd like the opinion of our police department.
Bob, I'd just like to clarify, Narav, I I mentioned something earlier, which you may have um. I I may have been wrong, because you you said something to the contrary. I I understood, at least originally, you were discussing about having some liquor behind the counter on the market side, but then you said perhaps not. I just want to clarify that.
I'm I'm still confused on that side because I have a customer's uh. So there is a two-way to do, because if anything is behind the counter, it's not self-access. So for example, if somebody is buying, there is a way, uh, you know, chances to put, someone can put uh the small bottle. Uh, easily in their pocket or somewhere like nips and stuff. So that's why I wanted to behind the register. So, for example, if someone twenty-one uh less can enter and if. If if they go the other side of the store, so mostly in a liquor store, all the small size stay behind the register because it's, you know, very easy to hide in your pocket. But all the big bottles, they they cannot hide easily. So I wanted that that way, like, you know, small size behind the register, so no one can have the self-access. If customer asks, we just give them easily.
Okay, John?
I have, I have been a regular patron of the liquor store and.
You you, you probably go into the wine spot where they're fifty bucks.
I think the way he has it set up is perfect. All of the 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 long counter where the um the checkout is. Kids don't go back there. It's not possible. There's always two people behind the counter. And to have the the Bob, what you described behind the counter, it's it's virtually impossible. Obviously, nothing's impossible, but it's very, very. Unlikely that anybody is gonna put something in their pocket, or there's gonna be sales to kids that are underage. It's um, a- as as, as he said, it's just, it it could be any other store, so uh that has those problems. But um, in the in the wine shop, the way it's set is set up, the way that it show in the um. On our packet, uh, it's very user-friendly and it's consistent with the way the market was.
Thank you, Robin.
None of the procedures are changing, right?
No.
Right. Okay. You have a motion?
I I would make the motion to approve as applied for.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, I, Bob Springer?
Aye, John Jeffries.
Aye, Robin Hunter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Narav.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Sorry for putting you together, but. Now, I was a parent of a teenager. Those are the questions I would ask.
I I'm I'm totally on your side. I'm I'm uh getting a father in second uh week of March, so I I I'm totally on your side.
Well, thank you.
Well, before you know it, he or she will be a teenager, and you'll have to worry about these things.
I'm I'm happy to announce the she, and it's the first baby girl, so I'm excited.
Congratulations.
Thank, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike, you got the gavel now. We took it away from Denise.
Okay. Uh, let me just have a second to share my screen here. Okay, do you see that okay?
Yep.
So, Mike, I don't know if this is the first time we hit November, but um it's certainly interesting that uh you guys have been working incredibly difficult hard to pull us together. Appreciate all the work of the staff to sort of get this done and T us up so that we can go through this carefully. Um, uh, as we prepare for FY twenty-five. Thank you and your staff.
No, thank you, Bob. I appreciate it. And thanks to to all the staff, thanks to Carl especially, as he's walking through this first process. Um, you know, to Bob's point, I I think it's really important, as the board knows, but for any public that are watching, these figures are in a very preliminary stage of the budget process. Uh, you especially because we're doing it earlier than normal. Uh, I just think it's really important to highlight that fact because it's really. You know, it's really just intended to kind of set the stage for the more in-depth budget review and discussion process over the next few months. Um, so before we get into this year, uh, just a quick look back at FY twenty-three and free cash. Um, these numbers are just estimates. Uh, the books have not been officially closed and free cash has not been certified. Uh, we're hoping for early in the new year. Uh, but just for uh, I know the board's aware, but for the public benefit, um, there's two main components to uh that make up our free cash calculation. Uh, the first is budgets that were not fully spent. Um, and you'll see that on the left-hand side. Um, we call turnbacks um from various departments. And the second is uh revenue that exceeded our estimates when we set the budget. Um, so again, you'll see that on the right-hand side, and a combination of all this is is what makes up our free cash. Um, you'll see for our expenditures, um, we're estimated to be at uh two point two million, uh, which is a little bit less than FY twenty-two. However, our local receipts are coming in at one point seven, um. Which I, sorry, that number seemed to drop off, but I think was uh about seven hundred thousand more um than than last year. So we do have a healthy, healthy number, and you know, it's important to know free cash plays a really big role in how we budget. It's an important revenue source um and for our budget and our reserves each year. Um, so again, as we continue to update throughout the budget process, we will, when these numbers are certified, we will revisit them uh in more detail.
So gross free cash is twelve? Ish?
Um. I'm sorry, say again?
So I thought we were looking at free cash somewhere around eleven million dollars.
Uh, so 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 we'll we'll get to, so this this is this is our FY twenty-three free cash, which is gonna come in at add up two point two and one point seven, so about um. Three, uh, so sorry, four million. Um.
Right, so the, so out of the one point seven, now, at the circuit breaker, we we funds, we've. We gross fund circuit breaker, so so the amount of money coming back is the tax rebate that we use to stabilize the tax rate. Is that right, Robin?
Right, so without the circuit breaker, our expenditures are coming back at one point five.
Yeah, okay. Right, so we always expect the circuit breaker to come back.
Right.
So we, whatever the circuit breaker is, we put back into the budget. So whatever we get back as circuit breaker goes back into the budget the following year to reduce the tax rate.
Right, right, okay, that's great. Thank you.
Um, so I know now moving on to this upcoming year, looking at the the budget overview, um, again, very preliminary, but uh, you know, we we do the levy increase at two point five percent, which is the maximum. Which is at nine hundred eighty-two thousand. Uh, we're currently uh estimating new growth at a hundred thousand. Um, state aid, which isn't set until, well, preliminary anyway, in January, February. Um, we're currently at one point four million is an estimate, and local receipts at um two point seven million. Uh, looking at reoccurring, uh, reoccurring expenditures, as the board knows, uh, the personnel board and selectmen voted a three percent COLA for non-union staff. Um, we have uh nine percent uh schools for the chikering increase, which is an estimate uh at this point. As the schools go through their process, as well as a five percent for the Dover Sherborne increase, again, as an estimate. Um, very early for property insurance, uh, but it's been suggested with our carrier, we want run with an eight percent uh increase in general liability. Uh, on top of that, um, the new community center brings higher rates, and it's a new building, uh, so we expect to increase for that as well. And then again, very early, but our health insurance uh has recommended a ten percent increase. So we do hope to see those numbers drop. Um, you know, we want to be very conservative, but especially at this point in the process, uh, but that's where those numbers lie uh right now. Um, so we'll revisit this again, but if you look at our operating budget for last year versus this year, we're seeing a ten percent change. Um, the big drivers there are are the schools, is is the largest portion of our budget, and also the excluded debt from the community center. Um, but it's important to remember that that debt increase will be offset by additional funds raised by. Uh, the taxation, as was proved by the voters, uh, because it is excluded debt. Um, so again, we'll we'll continue to dig in this as the process moves forward, but this is where we're currently sitting with our estimates.
How does that feel to you, Mike?
Um, so I I want to dig a little deeper. Uh, obviously, ten percent is a is a big number. Um, again, I think we need to work through and and demonstrate the the um. The excluded debt and how that relates. And then, as I said, you know, I my real hope is that we'll see a lesser increase. And some of the big drivers like health insurance and property as we move forward. Uh, I think it's important to be conservative at this point, but uh we hope to see some movement there to bring that percentage down.
And and you know, Mike, one of the things I would ask the assessors to take a long, hard look at new growth, because we did come in seven hundred thousand dollars higher. Um, in receipts, so it would be good to to try and get a more accurate estimate.
Yeah, no, we we, that is the current recommendation, but we will continue to work with them and refine absolutely.
But this is off point. Hey, Robin, is this the slide uh format that you used last year at the town meeting?
Uh, I'll have to go back and look, but you know, this is, this is a good format for the first.
Yeah, it's very, it's very attractive, yeah. Okay.
Speaking, if I couldn't wire you with the information, I'd wire you with the visual, right, so?
Yeah, yeah, always go for something, yeah.
Um, so within that operating budget, I just wanted to call out some of the more significant requests, uh, you know, in terms of staffing and programming. So, you know, under our, uh, and we'll go, obviously, you'll see this in much more detail as we go forward, but. Uh, there's there's two positions that, uh, one is new, one was not funded in this past year. So one is a finance director position that I'm recommending. Um, as the board knows and the community may know, for a number of years, although he served in different capacities over that time, we've had an interim finance director, um, Carl Lente, who works basically three days a week. Uh, you know, it's my recommendation that that become a permanent full-time position to continue that important work. And then, uh, a municipal project manager is, it has been in our budget in the past. Um, this past year, the funding for that, we shifted to our dedicated HR director position, which I think um has really been a value add. Um, and I I it I just can't speak enough of how much it already, I think, is paying dividends. Uh, but we are noticing and really feeling that loss of that project manager. Uh, you know, a lot of the initiatives that the board wants, the priorities that we want to pursue, really need someone to to manage those projects. Um, in addition to, you know, uh, my time and Chris's time and the kind of day-to-day work, a lot of that stuff gets lost. And I think you've you've seen that over the years, even though you've had a project manager for some of that with the different staff turnovers, a lot of the projects that you would like completed seem to linger. Uh, and so I think it's, this is a really important piece to do that. So again, it's not a new position, but the funding will be additive to this budget. Um, as it was redirected this past year to the HR director position. For the community center, as you just discussed, the community center director position uh had previously not been in the budget. Related to the community center, uh, we are currently looking at proposing two custodian positions for the community center. Um, the intention is the community center to be open early in the morning till later at night, so it would be a custodian to cover, I'm gonna make it up, at like the six to three, and then the three to eleven. Uh, shift for for keeping that open and clean, setting up rooms for different programs. And then Public Works uh is starting a request, and again, you'll review this in more detail with Kevin, but to add. Um, fifty thousand dollars to the budget over the next uh couple of years to increase our funding for um uh paving and road uh management. Um, a study was done, um, I think it was last year, that showed that we are kind of falling behind on our road ratings as as they cite numbers. Uh, in order to keep current and make sure that our number uh maintains and does not decrease in quality, we need to have some additional funding. So, um, this request is is part of a multi-year request to steadily increase the monies that are available for paving so that we can maintain the current roadway. the monies that are available for paving so that we can maintain the current roadway conditions as we go forward. So just a, a look at the capital. I, I won't go through every line here, but you'll can see, you can see the various requests. We, we have, I believe actually it might have come in this afternoon, but we, we didn't have it in time for this presentation, the school capital. So that the numbers are not, are not final, but we just wanted to know at least what the current totals we're looking for. And then the lower table shows the dedicated funding sources, which are per the capital funding policy, the selectmen adopted. And it shows, which calls for a portion of the levy, portion of free cash, bringing that total. You know, there is a delta here, as you can see, and this does, obviously doesn't include the schools, but you're looking at a two, almost exactly. Wow, that's weird. I didn't do that on purpose. A two million dollar delta between the capital requests and the revenue that's available. And so we'll see on the last side, some things to consider as we go through the process is use leveraging debt service to pay for some of the larger capital requests. That allows us to spread the cost over multiple years and reduce the overall impact to any individual budget. We are also looking at, as you'll see with DPW, it's a, it's a very large request this year. Part of that is an unexpected request related to the stormwater drainage at the highway garage. As you know, we had two almost back-to-back floodings. An investigation found that the system needs to be replaced. Through the ARPA program, which I know you're familiar with, there's been some monies that we have not been able to tap. They were designed for water and sewage infrastructure, which we don't have. So it was the money, essentially, if we weren't able to find a useful, we'd have to go back. There's been some expansion and changes to the program, and we now have a real strong belief, working with the county, that we can tap that money to pay for the stormwater repairs. So we're, we're not banking yet on that, but our fingers are crossed. And so we expect to see an improvement in that DPW number as we pursue that. So I'll certainly keep you up to date as we work through that process.
That's excellent.
So free care eight, ten, is that the amount of money that we use to sort of smooth the, the tax borrowing for the twenty nineteen? And does that include the OPEB allocation?
So the, the eight, ten, let me just pull up the policy here. Sorry. Of course, I can't find it right now, but yeah, I believe that's the percentage that's called for in the policy. I know it's one point five percent of the levy, and then I believe it's a portion of that of the free cash. I'll, I'll highlight that. I can send that, the exact language to you.
Yeah, fill me in. Yeah. Because I know we had the OPEB stabilization fund. And I know we had allocated money to smooth the tax impact.
Yeah, so I'll actually, I'll show, I think it might be the next slide that shows.
Right. This is, this is, the eight, ten is just for capital, so it's coming from the capital stabilization fund.
Let me, I'll get to the next slide here. So this is based on your other reserve, the, I'm sorry, the, the reserve policy implementation and free cash. So the projected free cash balance, again, it's projected, given the FY twenty three numbers are not final, is it nine point five million? The next slide, we'll talk a little more, but I will note that, that is actually a million dollars more than was originally estimated in the, the model that was developed. So that's something we could talk about as the budget season progresses. But this shows the different uses, the projected appropriations. So back to your point, Bob, the, the community center debt relief, stabilization fund, OPEB, et cetera.
Well, Mike, this is before your time, but we put this together about, we began putting this together about six years ago. But seeing it and watching it now year after year and seeing it in this format that you've showed us tonight, th- this is really, really helpful. That this year after year to see how it's been consistent specifically for this particular page of the presentation. This is like, this is magical compared to eight years ago where we would struggle and, and back and forth to get to this point where everybody was on the same page.
That's great.
Yeah, well done.
Well, I, I'm just sticking in a chart. You guys did the work for it, so. And so then my final slide is just kind of a summary and some policy decisions to think through, you know, as, as we start this process. So, you know, again, the preliminary forecast is at forty-seven point one million, which is an increase of four point three million or ten percent, as we discussed. You know, as is typical this early point, there, these are a lot of estimates and we'll continue to refine them through the winter and spring. And we expect that will have a bigger impact on that, that ten percent, hopefully bring that down. Position is especially now, we're trying to be very conservative. We talked a little bit about leveraging debt service for capital. So looking at the salt shed and stormwater, which is at one point five million, again, a portion of that, a large portion of that will be hopefully the ARPA money. And then the Willow Street culvert replacement, we saw what great success we had on Claybrook. And so we're hoping to continue that on, on Willow. And as I mentioned, the preliminary free cash was a million dollars greater than projected in the model. So there's going to be some options here. So we either use to adjust the model, to relook at the model, to use some, some additional free cash for capital, to plug something into capital stabilization or other strategic initiatives that we're working on. So that's just something that we'll have to keep in mind as we move forward and we can revisit.
Well, I mean, hey, Robin, it's, it's got to be a challenge to sort of make up for deferred maintenance in a, in a short period of time. You know, so, you know, I mean, scheduling out long-lived assets is, is, is hard. So is there a tendency to think about, you know, using more free cash to sort of smooth that future? Spend?
Well, you know, that was originally when, way back when, when we put the model together, we had determined that we really needed two million dollars in the capital.
Happy to give it to you.
As seed money, and we didn't get that. So, you know, again, we need to be, we need to be thoughtful. And, and I agree with Mike, it's definitely an option to put that one million towards the capital stabilization fund. But, you know, again, I think we need to go, continue to refine all of the expenses. Look at the estimates on both sides of the equation, the revenue and the expenses. And then it, I'll tell you, the good news is we have options. And then figure out what are the best options for the town.
That's right.
Now, that's always the nice position to be in. Okay, are there any other questions for Mike?
No, Mike, that was, you know, that was a great first pass. It would be super helpful to do these, you know, frequently, maybe little updates that you can even do them as part of your report at Board of Selectments meeting just to keep us abreast of what's, what's, what's come up and where, where refinements have, have happened.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that, that would be a nice, you know, add to the town, town administrator's report. Yeah.
Right.
Keep, keep, hopefully we can find ways of engaging the community.
Right. So that's why I think it's really, you know, I, as a citizen, I wouldn't freak out that it's a ten percent increase right now because I think there are a whole lot of placeholders. And we do have some tools in our toolbox that we can use to help reduce that. So, you know, again, let's continue to do what we've done for so many years is spend our money wisely.
So far, so good. Okay. I'm going to move on to one, five?
Yep.
Summary, the proposed opening date for the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting warrant is Thursday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, today.
That, that would be today. No. Well, for you guys, it's today. For me, it's yesterday. Because it's now, December first.
It's Friday. You're making this hard.
I know. I'm slap happy.
What's the stock market going to do today, Robin?
I have no idea, John.
All right, calm down, calm down. And the closing date is Friday, January twelfth, twenty twenty-four. The warrant article guidelines approved by the BOS on November ninth, twenty twenty-three, which explained the steps involved in placing an article on the annual town reading warrant, will be distributed to town staff, the boards and committees, commissions, chairs, and uploaded to the town reading webpage. I move to set the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting warrant opening and closing dates as Thursday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and Friday, January twelfth, twenty twenty-four, respectively.
Seconded, John Jeffries.
All in favor? Aye, Bob Springer?
Aye, John Jeffries.
Oh, aye, Robin Hunter. Sorry, John.
Okay.
The warrant is officially open.
God almighty, what an exciting day.
Let the games begin.
Board of Selectment items. Presenter, somebody named Board of Selectmen.
Police chief search update. I am very happy to, to inform everyone that we are down to two candidates. And I, I had the, as the chair of the search committee, I had the very unfortunate task to call, I, I personally called and spoke to the candidate who we did not move forward. We had three candidates at the end of the assessment that we interviewed. And they, they really, the three candidates performed exceptionally well. There was a very narrow gap between number one and number three. There is almost no gap between number one and number two. The number one and number two amongst the, the committee were evenly split. We decided to move two candidates forward to meet one-on-one with the Board of Selectmen.
Next week.
I'm sorry?
Next week, we're going to meet.
Yes.
I know Mona was working on the dates. I don't know if it got finalized.
I, as I said, I personally called candidate number three. I thanked him for his service to his community. His, he had, his, he did really, really well. And, and, and for a field that started with thirty candidates to get down to three candidates, we literally will not make a bad choice. You have two outstanding candidates. That's not only coming from the committee to the Board of Selectmen, but that's also coming from our consulting group who has been doing this for years and years and years, which consists of four current acting chiefs of police. So we feel just incredibly blessed to be in the position that we're in.
All right, come on, you're ruining my record here in terms of front punctuality.
Done.
So I want you to take on the investment working group while you're, while you have the mic.
Okay, the investment working group, we have, we have come to the understanding that due to the nature of what we are trying to accomplish, we have narrowed the focus of this investment working group to be made up of myself and two other, other people who have very, very specific investment background. We have very specific skills, training, and most importance, most importantly, licenses to be proficient and be experts in these areas. So in the area of municipal finance, specifically municipal bonding, it is a very specialized area. We felt that to make this process any more broad than we really need to is just a waste of effort and a waste of our, our taxpayers' time and, and money. So we're, we've narrowed the group, we've narrowed the focus. I am very pleased to report that we have two very, very good people who are known well to everyone.
Thank you, John. Robin?
So I'll be quick. So the Dover Housing Task Force has really done a lot of work. I appreciate the help of Chris and Mike and Jasmine to help pull together content for the website to make it more easily accessible. We have a really good first pass at a checklist. It's currently with the town departments to ensure that, that everything is in there that is needed. And I think we will be in a position to show some of our work to the Board of Selectmen in some upcoming meetings. But it's a good, it's a good committee and, you know, the work's been really spread evenly.
Good to know. We're going to try to get you done in five to 10 minutes, Robin.
Thank you.
Any comments on upcoming agendas?
No.
Also, the only comment I have is December twenty-eighth. I, I know it's school vacation week, and Mike, I don't know if you were planning to take any time off. But, you know, we might want to consider doing the meeting earlier, so. So if people are on vacation, they could go out to dinner.
Do we know anybody on vacation who went to dinner?
My family will be visiting me, so.
My wife will be on vacation, on school vacation, and definitely we out to dinner that night, so.
And John's going to be taking her out to dinner, so.
That'd be a great idea, Robin. Thank you.
I think from my perspective, I've provided whatever, you know, I can go through the BOS updates. But because it's so late, all you have to do is read tomorrow's edition of the website where all of the projects are updated.
The digital newsletter.
Right, right, Chris. Yes, Chris said yes. Okay.
Well done.
Chris, it's tomorrow for me. Is it up yet?
Chris, you don't have to answer that question.
It was a trick question.
Fair enough. It'll be ready to go.
Mike, you have anything left?
Yeah, so just, just briefly, you know, most, most of the last two weeks have been budget crap. I'll be before the warrant committee next Wednesday to do a similar kind of preliminary outlook. And continuing to meet with capital as needed as they move forward. I'll be meeting with the Selectmen's three to five committees, is that the official name? Okay, I'll be, they, I was invited to attend their meeting next week, so I'll be doing that. We continue to have discussions with Hail. So again, you know, I'll continue to update the board as, as there's any progress there. I did want to note that after your tax rate public hearing, our, our property tax rate was set. It's been set at ten point nine six, ten dollars ninety-six cents. That's down from the previous year of twelve dollars nineteen cents. And again, that's a reflection of, you know, the increased property values, very healthy increased property values here in Dover. The other note, I just wanted to let the board know that, and I don't think I can underestimate how much the staff appreciated your vote to close the day after Thanksgiving. It was a real morale boost. It was really appreciated. And I just wanted to, to report that back to you. I assume you probably guessed that, but I just want to, it was very overwhelming, the sentiment and the thankfulness for that. So thank you on their behalf for, for agreeing.
You're welcome on behalf of the board.
Perfect. And that's all I had.
Okay, I'm going to move C one. The consent agenda consists of the following. Approve including informational flyer for our town newsletter and town news and alert signup in property tax bill mailing. Approve special one-day liquor licenses for December eighth and sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Can I have a motion?
Seconded. Motion, I, I.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye, Bob Springer?
Aye, John Jeffries.
Aye, Robin Hunter. And I just want to say, I don't know who was responsible for designing the flyer, but it's really good.
That was all Chris.
QR code.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Very, very much agree.
So I'm late, seven twenty. I move to adjourn the meeting.
Seconded.
You mean one twenty?
Oh, God, we're never going to hear the end of this. You're just, you're pasty. Why aren't you?
Oh, God. The question is, do I even bother going to sleep? All right.
Good night, folks. All in favor? Aye, Bob Springer?
Aye, thanks a lot.
Thank you all.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to it, that was it.
Oh, we did. All right.
Good night, everyone.